I have all five council members and all staff members. Um, I will call to order the City of Desert Hot Springs regular meeting of the City Council, the City Council serving as a successor agency to the redevelopment agency board for April 7th, 2020. This is our five or 6:00 PM regular session via tele video conference. As you see on the screen there, roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts.
Present.
Councilmember Gardner.
Present.
Councilmember Pye.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Griffith.
Present.
Mayor Mattis.
Present. Uh, we do have Pastor Kiefion Shepherd. Uh, he's going to be giving us the invocation. I'm assuming Gerald, you'll be unmuting him.
Yes, Roberta Will.
Pastor Shepherd, are you there?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
All right. All right. Okay. Let's uh, let's pray. God, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for bringing us here to this meeting, God. This is not our traditional format, but we thank you for public technology allowing us to move business forward in spite of all the challenges and obstacles. We thank you for this opportunity for us to continue to come before you to the throne of grace as a city, God. And we just pray for clarity. We pray for unity. We pray for peace right now, God, and most importantly, God, we pray for a sense of community here, knowing that we're all in this together. And we just thank you, um, just for doing what you're doing. And we thank you in advance for healing this land. In Jesus's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much.
That's all right.
At this time, uh, the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm gonna have Councilmember Gardner lead us in the pledge. Um, let me, Gerald will be putting a flag on the screen there.
All right, everybody, place your hand over your heart and join me in pledging allegiance to the flag. Ready? Begin.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. City Attorney, we reported on closed session.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you so much. We do have one reportable, um, item. The council voted 5-0 to commence, uh, litigation. And, uh, once that litigation is commenced, um, we will disclose to any person upon inquiry of the facts, circumstances, and particulars. Thank you very much. That concludes my report.
Thank you. At this time, we'll be asking for approval of the agenda. We are asking, the city attorney is asking us to pull item number six. It is not ready to be heard at this time. Uh, besides that, the rest of the agenda would go forward. Is there any, any items in the consent calendar that anybody would like to pull?
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve the agenda, removing item six from consideration tonight and approving the consent calendar as is.
Is there a second?
I, uh, I need to abstain from the March 3rd minutes.
With an exception, it's abstation from abstaining from March 3rd would be Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem Griffith. I got tongue tied today for some reason. Um, any other comments? Is there anybody that, do we have any, do we have any public comments on the consent calendar?
Ken's waving at you.
Yes, Jim.
I have a question during the, um, that, the minute, Robert and Gary asked for something to be on the agenda. And it hasn't come back.
Um, I can, I can answer that.
Okay.
Um, and that was, I believe it was the Inland Empire Regional Energy Network.
Yes.
And, um, I was asked about that and I thought, given the circumstances, this is probably not an appropriate time to, to put it on the agenda because we would need another speaker, um, from Coachella Valley Association of Governments. And I thought we might want to put that off a little bit until we get into more regular schedule.
Everyone satisfied with the motion now?
I am.
Gerald, was there any public comments on the consent calendar?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Please take roll call vote.
Councilmember Betts.
Present. Oh, excuse me, yes.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Councilmember Pye.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Griffith.
Aye.
And Mayor Mattis.
Yes. Aye. Our next item is public comments. Bear with us on this as we get through this. Uh, we do have a few, do we have a few speakers?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I, we have several speakers, um, that are speaking on actual items, but I do have one question. Mario Gonzalez, I'm going to unmute him so he can speak. He said he had a comment during general comments as well as on an item, so I just wanted to verify that. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez, uh, did you want to speak in public comments or just on an item? Mr. Gonzalez?
His mic is muted.
No, it's, it's, it's unmuted.
Uh, this is Greg Rodriguez. I don't know if you got my name mixed up.
Is there anybody that wants to speak in public comments?
Mr. Gonzalez, can you hear me? So, um, I know he does want to speak on item number two. I'm not sure why his audio isn't working.
We'll give him, uh, we'll give him opportunity then. Is there anybody else that wants to speak in public comments? Greg, did you?
Um, no, on item four, not general public comments.
All right. So, uh, Roberta, you have nobody else that you can see?
No.
We'll be flexible, so bear with us if your mics aren't working or something's not working, we'll be flexible with you. I have no public comments at this time, so we'll go to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We just have a few things. I'd like to ask Doria Williams to talk a little bit about the city's, uh, approach to handling the COVID-19 issue and, uh, and what we, what changes we've made to date as we have discussed many times with all of you. This is a fluid situation and we change as state and federal and local or countywide ordinance and laws change and mandates, so we follow those as soon as we can. But she's gonna give you a little update on what we're doing, uh, the current status of our, our staff and, uh, and the webinars that people can turn, tune into to see what's available up to them out there.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. So, um, just to start off, um, as most of you all know and the community is aware of, um, this is a very fluid situation, so orders are constantly getting updated from the county, from the state, so on and so forth. So, some of the most recent orders that occurred over the weekend are, is what I'm gonna start by going over. So, over the weekend, the county's Public Health Department, um, issued an order expanding the stay-at-home order that was previously given by Governor Newsom. So, among other things, the new order prohibits public and private gatherings of any size and requires all persons to wear coverings over their face, um, when they're in public. So, um, this again prohibits gatherings of any kind, both in the public and at private residences. So, no longer gonna birthday party be held at a home or, you know, they're really trying to, um, really stress the importance of social distancing. Um, and so, so that is a big thing that, uh, we're seeing, um, this week. Um, the, the face, the, the covering of the face, um, is definitely something new and, um, that is in place for anybody anytime they're out in the public. So, you're going to a shopping center, if you're going to get gas, it doesn't matter what you're doing, you're going on a walk, you should be wearing a mask. Um, now, with respect to enforcement, and we do have the chief here and, and he can, um, chime in on this, but, you know, the reality of the situation is our, our police department is still functioning, um, normal day-to-day activities. And so, they're not gonna be out there in the street telling people to wear their masks or, or handing out tickets. We expect that there's a certain level of personal responsibility that's taking place amongst our residents to ensure their safety and the safety of others in the community. Um, there are, um, now, research has been done and they know that droplets, um, can be, um, admitted from an individual that may be asymptomatic. And so, the facial coverings is one to, uh, possibly prevent the transmission of COVID-19 from an asymptomatic individual to, um, somebody else in the community, um, and then also to protect individuals as well. So, please, please, please adhere to these, um, new orders. Um, we are still going though to sites, uh, from an enforcement side of things. If we have, you know, hotels that are not following the orders or shopping centers that aren't requiring masks, we are very much engaging with our businesses and speaking with them and reminding them and educating them on what these orders are. So, um, I just can't stress enough, um, as the mayor and I have said, week in and week out in, in our updates, please adhere to these orders. The sooner we all do this, uh, the sooner we can be on our, on our way back to, um, to life as, as we know it. Um, in addition to that, we've also put, um, some additional things in place as it pertains to operations at City Hall. So, effective yesterday, our city, majority of our staff, the good majority of our staff are now working, um, remotely 100% of the time, um, unless they are deemed a critically essential employee. So, our public safety officers, um, code enforcement, our inspectors, and our public works, um, employees are still working, um, in the field and then they're doing their reports, um, at home, but they are still out there day in and day out doing their job. Everybody else at City Hall is working, um, through telecommuting. Um, we are still available for meetings, whether that be through Zoom or, um, through conference calls. Uh, we are still answering our phones, we are still participating and keeping things moving forward. Uh, but if you show up at City Hall in an attempt to, um, you know, get somebody, unfortunately, you are not going to find us there. We are working from home. So, I do want our community to know that. And if you need assistance of any kind, if you contact the main City Hall number, we do have a receptionist that is still working, um, and that can get you transferred to, uh, somebody that can help you. Um, again, I want to remind everybody that we are keeping an eye on the evolving situation. It is very fluid and as we get new information, you all will get new information. Um, and that concludes my update.
City Manager, anything else?
I keep forgetting to unmute myself. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, Doria. Danny, can you speak about, uh, the progress on Palm Drive and also the, uh, two upcoming traffic signals, if you would?
All right. Can you hear me? There you go. Perfect. So, but the first one's a Palm Drive, the ATP. That one's the, uh, one that just recently was repaved. That's from Camino Ventura to, uh, Two Bunch Palms Trail. The repaving was completed, uh, last week. Uh, due to unfortunate inclement weather, we had to postpone the striping to this Monday. So, we will continue the striping this Monday. We'll also be raising the manhole this Monday and we'll be installing the misting signal loops that were, uh, removed as part of the paving. Um, so that project is almost wrapping up. At the same time, we have the Phase Two project, which is from Two Bunch Palms Trail all the way to Pearson. That one is continuing to work. The concrete work was, was, uh, started a couple of weeks ago and will be finished this weekend. They're actually gonna be working there Friday and Saturday. And the asphalt removals, asphalt grindings will begin next week, so we will see a lot more work from Two Bunch Palms all the way to Pearson. And the traffic signals, the traffic signal poles were actually already delivered to our corp yard and we are in position of our traffic signal light poles. Uh, the corp, the contractor will begin all the underground, uh, utilities for those traffic signals this Friday and will continue for the next two months. We expect to finish the traffic signals about a month ahead of schedule. So, now, right now, we're looking at about between July and August. We're looking at, first, we're looking at August, September, we're now looking at July and August. Uh, we'll get an updated schedule from the contractor and send it to all of the staff so they can get informed. Thank you, and that's the only updates.
Mr. Mayor, I just would like to bounce back to, uh, Assistant City Manager Williams real quick. There was one other item about the parks that we'd like to discuss.
Um, thank you. So, I apologize. Um, in addition to the previous update, I do also want to let the community know at this point, our parks are essentially closed. Um, we have, uh, the bathrooms are locked, um, and that did come at the recommendation of the county. Um, all of the playground equipment has been taped off, um, and is not available for use at this point. And we are strongly encouraging folks to, um, stay out of the parks at this point, um, as we continue to, um, stress social distancing so that, uh, we can, uh, continue to do our part to flatten the curve.
Thank you, Doria. Mr. Mayor, that's all we have.
Thank you for your reports tonight. We'll go to Mayor and Councilmember comments. I'm just gonna randomly pick you since I can't see you all on the screen. I'll start with, uh, Mr. Gardner.
All right. Gotta find my notes here. I just have one, uh, one little note, um, to report. Just after our last, uh, meeting, the Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy finalized the purchase of 482 acres of land adjacent to the Mission Creek Preserve just west of, uh, of Highway 62 in the south of, uh, of Mission Lakes Boulevard. The land will be owned by the CBMC and the Friends of the Desert Mountains and, uh, abuts the Sand to Snow National Monument. Sort of a good news, bad news situation, uh, in a way. It was land that the city had approved for a housing development, uh, and the developer had planned to give acreage to help fund the Sand to Snow Visitor Center. Um, however, the Conservancy and the Friends of the Desert Mountains approached him and made a full price offer and he took it and, uh, they sold the property to the Conservancy, which will now leave the land undeveloped. However, discussions, uh, with Friends of the Desert Mountains and the Conservancy, uh, we can still build the visitor's center there, uh, once BLM and the Forest Service approve building, infrastructure in the monument. And Friends of the Desert Mountains will probably be the likely operator, uh, of the visitor's center as they operate the visitor's center for the Santa Rosa, San Jacinto Mountains National Monument, uh, over in Palm Desert. So, um, that happened just before, or just after our last meeting and before we all went on, uh, on, uh, stay-at-home orders. So, wanted to bring everybody up on that, but that's all that I've got, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Pye.
C-MAG is still meeting and I will be discussing that later. Uh, in this, um, forum, I wanted to thank staff for all that they're doing to help keep our residents safe. And I wish, uh, a happy Passover to everyone. This Exodus will start again. And to all others, happy Easter. I'm done.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, again, thanks. I echo, uh, Councilmember Pye's sentiments. Thanks to staff for all the hard work. It's a lot of extra duty, um, putting this on, getting a lot of, um, emails and texts from residents. Uh, some of them, I think, are asking if the public information or the public comment session's gonna be open, and I guess Gerald's working on that. Um, I did attend a meeting by Sunline, at Sunline, and, uh, got some updates there for you. Uh, if you've seen double buses running around the city, that's because on the busy lines, they may get more than 10 people on a bus. So, they're running two buses and they're calling it a ghost bus. There's a bus that's just following on the same route, on the busy routes. And so, uh, you know, the social distancing and the recommendations by the county health department, uh, has them working on that. It's only on the busiest routes. The general concerns at Sunline are they're moving a lot of people around the county, which seems to be counterproductive to, um, you know, everybody staying at home. And, but there's also people who are relying on the bus to get to work. Uh, the count, the Sunline's torn between the Federal Transit Authority, California, and the county who say the bus must keep rolling, and the public health agency that has concerns about them continuing to run. Uh, Sunline has made some moves, actually the first to implement them, rear boarding with no fare. And, um, other agencies originally questioned whether or not Sunline could do it. I think they just made a bold move down there. The director did and did it. So, there's no fare and you enter through the back door and that's limiting contact for the driver. The drivers are obviously concerned. Um, so it puts, they, they put porta potties out at key locations. At first, they had all the public using them, so that was causing a problem. They weren't sanitary for the drivers, so the solution was to put out two porta potties and label one for drivers and one for the public, and that seemed to have solved the problem. And, uh, Sunline is fogging all the buses using the HVAC system and some type of unique way that came up that's, they found. And so, first one doing that, now the other ones are starting to do that. Uh, Sunline ridership is down 60%. Okay. Um, you know, as everybody's know, I wanna thank the mayor and congratulate the mayor and the staff for the job they did on the city webinar. It was very, very informative, very well done. It was nice to have the SBA people there. Um, I participated in a similar county webinar with the SBA, actually, and both of them, both had a little different information, and that seems to be a big issue right now is there is so much information out there for people to get help, for renters, for, you know, the, the relief that we put in place. But you have the EIDL program, the payroll protection program, the unemployment benefit, extra benefits, the, the extra benefits for restaurant workers. It's a really, really long list, and as much as all of us have tried to pay attention to it, I can't imagine members of the public being able to sort through all this. So, cutting to the chase, I'm thinking we need to set up something in our city at some point in time that's a help desk. Um, something along the lines of what we do when we're in at a, um, you know, open enrollment for the healthcare that would, you know, hey, you go in there, it's confusing, there's a lot going on, and this would get people, um, you know, actual place to go and get their questions answered, some type of, uh, fair to, you know, after all this gets done, after all these, you know, steps we're taking to protect health and everything, we are gonna have to start up our city economy again. So, um, that's something I think we really need to, uh, take a look at, and I understand that may be taxing staff, so thrown out there as an idea, but I'm, I'm sure everybody's thinking along the same lines anyhow. Uh, wearing a mask is, uh, the ordinance that just came out of the county. Sunline, by the way, is requiring everybody to wear a mask so they don't get on the bus. Um, yeah, I've been advocating for that forever. My wife, well, she'd kill me if I go outside without a mask on. I've been for about six weeks. People were looking at you cross-eyed before, well, now everybody's wearing them, so that's great. Made no sense to tell people to stay six feet away when you hadn't, you know, there just wasn't enough. But, and I'm really happy to see the participation. I went, I was outside in front of Vaughn's and I see two guys getting ready to walk in the store and then the worker was there and said, "Sorry, you're not coming in if you don't have a mask on." And so, they turned around, got in their truck, and left. Well, then you go to, uh, Stater Brothers, and it's just like wide open, no mask or mask, you go on in. I know staff's been there and talked to them, but I'm wondering at this point in time if, if code can't get cooperation out of the businesses, i- in addition to Vaughn's, I know the hardware store's doing the same thing, but maybe we need Mr. Mayor to have a meeting where we call an executive center or emergency meeting, whatever we need to do, and we say that if a business is not going to police it, uh, that we're gonna take some action against a business. Right now, as it stands, it's the public is being asked to do this, but we've got a place where the, uh, you know, we gotta hold, we can probably put on the business and say, "Ah, you'll be shut down. If you let people in here without masks on, we're serious about this." And I really think we need to take a step. So, in other words, to extend, whatever extent is legally possible, our city should take action to make sure no one enters a store or a public building without a mask and to hold the business or the building owners accountable if they don't. And that would be request to city staff to obviously examine that issue and see what we can do and come back to the council if we can. I don't need an answer now, but if there's something we can do on that one, I, I just think we've, we've gotta get much tougher on this one. Um, I think the county did the right thing. Um, you know, everything else is the same as everybody else has said and going through. This is a really tough time and I just hope everybody will stay at home and pay attention. This next two weeks seems very, very critical. Um, and we're gonna get through this one. It's just, it's, it's, I, nobody's ever seen anything like this, uh, since the way back when, you know, the depression or whatever else, we just have to hope we climb out of it. So, um, again, I really wanna thank staff and the public out there that's cooperating with everything so much, and I'm sure we're gonna get through the other side of this one. Uh, we just gotta get there and, so that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Griffith?
I don't have a lot. I do wanna say thank you to the city staff. They've been doing a fantastic job. Um, as everybody knows, everything's been changing day by day, especially if you look back over the past month, uh, and they've done a great job of, uh, doing their best to keep everybody informed. Um, I wanna thank the mayor and, uh, Doria also for your videos, which I think have been really helpful to a lot of people. Um, it, it really makes a difference in, in maybe lessening some of the anxiety and some of the uncertainty. So, um, I think that was great that you've done that, and I knew you guys have worked really hard and you're probably all exhausted, so I wanna thank you for that. Um, I guess I'm lucky because I haven't had to do as much as you. Uh, most of the commissions and committees I've been on have been, uh, temporarily postponed. Uh, I did have my first, uh, Chamber of Commerce Board meeting today. That's the first one since, I, I wanna say February. Very short, but, uh, and then tonight is our first city council meeting in a month, so it's kinda nice to get back into somewhat of a routine, um, but really don't have a lot to report right now. That's it.
Thank you, everybody. Um, I just wanted to say that there's been quite a few meetings, obviously, with this COVID-19, and I couldn't, I couldn't be more proud of the city council and the city staff on how we handled this, uh, through the City of Hot Springs. I know there's always gonna be a critic on there, but we've followed all county orders, we followed our governor's orders, and we followed the President of the United States orders. So, again, thank you to everybody's participation. Um, if you did not see the webinar for small business, um, that we would take, that we recorded, uh, on Monday, um, please feel free to check the city's, uh, YouTube, and I believe it'll be on channel 17 and the city's Facebook, and you can actually, uh, listen to the webinar. It has a lot of great information on there for small businesses. Our next webinar will be coming up soon on public safety and then one after that on healthcare. And as long as this lasts, we'll continue to put information out there on our website, uh, for people to be able to, uh, get the information that they deserve during this crisis. All right, that's all I have. I'm gonna move on to our public hearing at this time. Item number two, development permit number 09-19, an application to develop and complete the remaining 73 vacant lots within the Aguadoche, uh, residential development track map number 32421. Community Development Director Rebecca Deming.
Excuse me, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I need to abstain. Um, I have a, through the Palm Springs Cemetery District, I have a contract, uh, relationship with the developer. Um, it doesn't have one thing to do with this or the other, but I don't want the developer without me abstaining, um, having a problem.
So, you'll be recusing yourself from this item?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Did you wanna just step away from your camera at this time or turn off your camera?
I'm, I'll step away.
Thank you. Rebecca, as soon as she, you're, you're good to go. We're not hearing your auto, audio.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor, Council. The project is for the completion of the remaining 73 vacant lots within the Aguadoche Residential Development. The project is located on the south side of Two Bunch Palms Trail, approximately 1,200 feet west of Palm Drive, between Quyamaca Drive and Cactus Drive. The slide, uh, this slide shows the existing homes in Aguadoche. The proposed homes were built and designed so that they are consistent with the development standards and architecture, the previously approved development permit and design review approval. Here's additional pictures of the current site. The proposed elevations have a desert contemporary Mediterranean design utilizing stucco exterior finishes with accent trim, tile roofs, and stone veneer accents. The proposed architecture and color schemes match and complement the existing homes in the housing development. Models are staggered so that specific models are not repeated on adjacent lots in order to vary the architecture along the street frontage. Each model also has a reverse plan and options for two or three-car garages or dated court guards. Staff has provided a table outlining each proposed model. This is also on the staff report, the allocation of the interior floor space and the architectural elements and exterior finishes. Each house will provide off-street covered parking within an enclosed garage. within an enclosed garage. The applicant has stated there will be 11 phases, and the timeline for the buildout is dependent on home sales. Phase one will consist of the development of five lots with two model units, which will include a mix of plans. The typical standard front yard will utilize drought tolerant landscaping in a variety of trees and shrubs consistent with city requirements. The front yard includes native boulders, cobbles, and decomposed granite to create variation. The project will also landscape along the north side of Aguadoche Drive and the retention basin. On March 10, the planning commission recommended approval of this development permit. And on February 8, 2005, the city council had approved the original track map and a general plan amendment and zoning map amendment and the original development permit for this project. At that time, the council approved the mitigated negative declaration for the project and persuaded to sequoia, once an MND has been adopted for the project, no subsequent environmental review needs to be completed unless there are substantial changes to the project that weren't additional review. Staff recommends that the city council approve the development permit 0919 to develop and complete the remaining 73 lots in this project. That concludes my staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions you have.
Do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have Leslie Stiles is on the phone. She'll be speaking.
Leslie?
Leslie Stiles is representing the applicant, by the way.
Hi, I'm Leslie Stiles. Good evening, Mayor, Council members and staff. I'm here to represent the applicant and answer any questions you might have about the project.
Thank you very much. Do you have any other public comments?
Mario Gonzalez was wanting to speak, but there's an issue with his audio. So he is allowing Leslie to speak for him.
Okay. We'll go to council member comments this time. Do you have any questions for Community Development Director or the applicant?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is there any RV parking included in this project?
I believe there is some space to be able to fit RV parking on some of the lots.
But are they, are they selling these and designating these? You know, is that a selling feature on the homes that have RV, that have RV parking?
Not at this time.
Okay, what I want to do is make sure that if there's any marketing of this with RV parking, that RV parking be installed per code, so that we don't have a situation where it's sold as RV parking, but then when a resident moves in and parks their RV on dirt instead of a paved surface, that we've now got a code issue. So if we could just make sure when a motion gets made, that any RV parking will be installed to code, anything designated as RV parking will be installed to code, that'd be great. What's the phasing, or what's the, when do sidewalks go in? Is this, does this development have sidewalks in front of the homes?
No.
Okay, so it's the roll curb?
Yes.
Okay, and phasing, you have what, 48 phases on this one?
No.
Sorry, it's trying to be funny. How many phases do you have on this one?
I think it's 11.
Which is a lot, because this was normally just one phase, right?
No, it was broke down into several phases. We're the original developer of the of Aguadoche, and it was broke down into several phases. So we just completed the portion we did back in 2006, and now we're, it just makes it easier.
I think it was 13, I can't remember. So it's okay. I was just trying to be funny there. It doesn't work usually. Okay, so I'm really happy to see you guys coming here and starting up these homes. And, you know, it's nice to have some good news. And I'm sure the residents in there are going to be very happy to have their subdivision finished out. Do you have any idea how long it'll take to get all this built out?
Probably a couple of years.
Is that what the development agreement is for, is a couple of years?
I'm not sure, but that's usually how long it takes. Once we start, we start selling, that's how long it takes to finish a project of this size.
And last question is, these are all pretty much going in according to the same architecture as the the existing homes with safer changes to meet the California Building Code?
Absolutely, same architect designed them.
Okay, great. All right, wonderful. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
And I apologize, I wasn't following the agenda correctly. So the the public hearing is officially open, and we're taking testimony from the applicant. We're asking the applicant questions from council. Does any other council members have questions of the applicant? All right, we'll take, we'll take public testimony in favor. Is there anybody besides the applicant that would like to speak on this in favor of this item?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody opposed? Anyone in neutral position? Since there was no other public comments, the applicant doesn't need to do any rebutting of these comments. Is there anything else the applicant would like to add?
I just wanted to thank Rebecca and her staff and Doria for all the help with preparing the package and the submittal.
Well, I think I want to thank you for coming back to the community and rebuilding, getting this project started again. It's very important to our community to finish these projects. So thank you. At this time, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any more questions for staff from the city council? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move with staff recommendations.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve the development permit number 0919 to complete 73 vacant lots within the Aguadoche Residential Track Map number 32421. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Betts?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Potem Griffin? And Mayor Manis?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with a recusal by Councilmember Pye.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Pye, would you rejoin us?
Coming. Okay, I'm here.
All right, our administrative calendar is item number three, lighting and landscaping maintenance district and drainage assessment district, initiate proceedings for the FY 2020 21 levy and collection of assessments. Our financial director, Mr. Buckham.
Yes, good evening, council members and mayor. Before your three resolutions to initiate the proceedings to levy and collect assessments for the city's landscaping, landscape and lighting maintenance districts and the drainage and assessment, drainage assessment districts for the 2021 fiscal year, landscaping and lighting maintenance district number one will provide funding for maintenance repairs facilities throughout the city, which facilities include landscape, city landscaping, sidewalks, trees, street lighting, parks, medians, parkways, and items like that. The lighting and landscape and lighting maintenance district number two will provide.
Mr. Buckham, real quick, we're gonna have to take these separately. I forgot. Sorry, my fault. Item number one is the staff report on that. You'll have to take resolutions two and three separate from Mr. Betts and I, as we have to recuse ourselves from two and three. Anything else on item, on resolution number one?
No.
Okay.
I just have a quick question, Mr. Mayor. So item, the first item on this item one is citywide, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And the city attorney says as long as it's citywide, we're okay?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, so item number, resolution number one, is there any public comments on this item? I don't hear of any. So we'll close the item, public comments at this time. And I do have any other questions from council? I'll entertain a motion on resolution number, adopt a resolution of city council initiating proceedings, which is number one of item three.
So moved.
A second.
There's a motion, a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Aye.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pye?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Griffin?
Aye.
Mayor Manis?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item three, resolution two and three, Mr. Betts and I both have to recuse ourselves because we live within the district. Mr. Betts, anything else you'd like to add?
Just stating my recusal is that I have either homes or a business in within proximity of the areas in question, so I'll be recusing.
All right, we'll be stepping away, and Mayor Potem Griffin will be taking over the meeting.
Okay, item number three, and number two, to adopt a resolution of the city council initiating proceedings for the levy and collection of assessments for the landscape and lighting maintenance district number two for fiscal year 2021, 2020 and 2021. Mr. Buckham?
Yes, so lighting, lighting and landscaping maintenance district number two provides funding for repairs and maintenance for over 18 separate zones within the city. Those improvements will improve landscaping, improvements in repairs, lighting, street lighting, graffiti removal, sidewalks, and other facilities within those zones.
Okay, do we have any public comments at this time?
No, we do not.
Any comments from council? Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pye?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Griffin?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously with a recusal by Councilmember Betts and Mayor Manis.
Okay, and item number three, number three, to adopt a resolution of the city council initiating proceedings for the levy and collection of assessments for the drainage assessment district number one for fiscal year 2020 through 2021. Mr. Buckham?
Yes, the drainage and assessment district number one provides funding for improvements in maintenance in the facilities, also including landscaping within the drainage areas and drainage itself. And these are provided for, these are assessments for those properties within that zone as well.
Moves staff recommendation.
Second.
Hold on, I gotta ask for public comments first. Any public comments?
No, there is not.
Okay, and any, no council member comments. And so I do believe we have a motion and a second, correct?
Correct.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pye?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Griffin?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously with a recusal by Councilmember Betts and Mayor Manis.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to item number four, which is the mid-year budget adjustments for the 2019-20 fiscal year. Mr. Buckham?
Yes, thank you. So during the fiscal year, as changes happen and more information becomes available, these annual budget adjustments become, become necessary. The mid-year budget adjustments for the 1920 fiscal year can include changes to the general, the consolidated general fund as well as restricted funds. The restricted funds have changes because of new information that's come up requiring, you know, additional maintenance and items. It's also budget changes in capital improvement projects, there are changes to to the successor agency, and then changes into the various lighting and lands, lighting and maintenance district as well as the drainage assessment district. The biggest changes are to the consolidated general fund. Because of the recent events to the COVID-19, there are, you know, several, you know, significant revenue reductions within the general fund. And these reductions, however, these reductions are offset by increases in other revenues. These are other revenues that the general fund is actually already received or will receive from sources that are as yet not affected by the COVID-19 measures. So as they are presented, the mid-year budget adjustments, also to let you know that staff has actually gone through and done some, you know, expenditure cuts within the general, consolidated general fund to help also offset some of these, the reductions in revenues. So as presented, the mid-year budget adjustments will increase the actual revenues in the consolidated general fund by $292,678 to a total of $22,717, $717,465. And then increased expenditures, $335,375 to a total of $22,982,184. This will make our estimated fund balance be calculated at $11,168,927. There is, this is a decrease in any fund balance, but we are, we have expected that due to the use of $482,000 of fund balance to be used to equip, to replace heavy equipment, which was approved in November 2019. So staff requests that we approve the fiscal year 1920 mid-year budget adjustments. And then I'll answer any questions that you have.
Before we get to questions, do we have public comments?
Yes, yes, we do. It's Mr. Greg Rodriguez.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Greg Rodriguez. I work for, as most of you know, Supervisor Manuel Perez. I also lead the Coachella Valley Collaborative on Homelessness in a joint project between the supervisor and Sebag. First of all, I want to say this is probably one of the best controlled Zoom conferences I've been on in the last three weeks. So thank you. I want to start too, is that, you know, we fully understand the economic challenges that are arising. And so you know, the county, both in our emergency operations center, as well as in Supervisor Perez's office, have been not only dealing with the COVID-19 emergency response on the public health aspect, but also economically as well. I'm actually speaking on this item tonight to encourage you to please maintain and protect the $103,000 budgeted line items to Sebag for the CV Housing First Program. I understand the economic challenges, but I would implore you that if we have to reduce any type of services through the valley, or more importantly, Desert Hot Springs on the homelessness's program, that would be a dire thing to be doing right now. There is really great work being done even in the midst of this crisis. As you know, we have increased our contract with Path of Life to increase from the current 12 units to 24 units. They're at 15 and or 16 as of tomorrow, units and rapidly growing. Additionally, we have worked within Sebag, specifically Tom Cox, running a program and securing hotel rooms at this time when a lot of them are vacant, to increase our number of crisis stabilization unit housing with, of course, the goal of intense case management and getting them into permanent supportive housing. On the regular Path of Life, Sebag Housing First Program, there's actually three units that we already utilize in Desert Hot Springs. And we are in conversations with a couple of hotels within Desert Hot Springs. Not only does this help house homeless individuals and protect them from any further spread of COVID amongst encampments, but additionally actually helps with some revenue with those hotels that are experiencing the loss of revenue. Also want to take, say that Path of Life under the CV Housing First Program and the funding that comes from all of our cities, and the county, and the Desert Healthcare District, has rapidly increased our rapid resolution or diversion, whichever name you want to use, to really prevent people not only from falling into homelessness, but actually helping those that have just fallen in to get temporary assistance on deposits, documentation help, et cetera. So there really is some great action happening, and that's throughout the valley. I also want to say that Sebag, again, Tom Cox and myself and Doria can attest to this, is the work that we've been trying to do on the Two Bunch Palms encampments. Unfortunately, we're a little stalled right now because of the coronavirus. However, what we're finding is that those that are in encampments are actually more protected than if we started splitting them up and putting them out into the city as a whole. I also want to say that the money that Desert Hot Springs has already given in the past, but also this budgeted line item really does help leverage resources. We've seen that through the Desert Healthcare District's contributions to CV Housing First. Additionally, I've been able to maintain the county funding, and not just myself, but the supervisor, maintain the county funding for the CV Housing First Program. So any reduction by cities really does kind of hurt that leveraging effect. Finally, I just want to say really, as I said in the beginning, the last thing we need to do right now is decrease any type of funding for homelessness services. I can tell you on the front lines of this that this is only going to get worse before it gets better. And our big goal, one of our big departments out of the EOC in Riverside, and we've been operating the supervisor and I and a couple staff members out of the NDO EOC the last two and a half weeks, one of the big departments in there is about protecting people from falling into homelessness and actually getting people out of homelessness. and actually getting people out of homelessness. So I would really encourage you to maintain this light item and hopefully can find another avenue to help with the budget deficit. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions if you have. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Standby. You might have questions and other public comments.
No, there is not.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to councilmember comments. Anyone like to ask any, yes, Mr. Gardner? You're not unmuted?
There we go. Sticky, sticky pad there. Looking at the, the projected budget numbers and the money that's coming in, Mr. Buckheim, I'm just, we're, we're barely squeaking by with the increase in some unexpected areas and the decrease in TOT reserve revenue and, and things like that. And we're kind of, it's, boy, it's just, it's just, it's just squeaky, squeaky tight there. Are we cutting ourselves a little too close? Do you, if this thing continues on through May and June, are we going to have to revisit this and, and make some even more deeper cuts? Because right now we're kind of just maintaining by not, by not filling existing positions and reallocating some funds around and stopping some, some work that hadn't started and things like that. We're, we're keeping our head above water, but how confident are you and the folks over at Webb that, that these numbers will hold and that we're not going to go much past May? And what happens if we do go much past May?
Mr. Mayor, before Jeffrey jumps in, we also have Mike Bush on the line. If there's any questions specifically of him, he has reviewed all this, and we have brought him into the fold with us. So I think he may also be able to add something to that. Jeffrey, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm very confident that these, these numbers, you know, these numbers are hold, some of the, some of the revenues are ones we've already received. So we, we're a good spot there. Confident we'll hold like through May. However, these, these, like the sales tax revenues actually do not include Mayor, I'm sorry, not Mayor, Governor Newsom's newest pronouncement Friday on allowing small businesses defer up to $50,000 in, in tax liability. So if that comes, you know, once we kind of figure out how much that is, and if this does go on longer than, than May, we are probably going to have to come back and do some, some more cuts or, you know.
That was my next question.
Down some of the fund balance.
Yeah, that was, that was my next question because we're, you didn't, the governor's pronouncement on, on allowing small businesses to not pay their sales tax was, came out after you had done all of these projections. So do you even have, do we even have a rough idea of where that, how much that'll be on our end?
Defer taxes, not, not relieve them.
Or defer them. I mean, yeah, we get them down the road, but we, we've got the cash flow to cover it, but hopefully they'll be able to pay them down the road, too.
So, yeah, so they are deferred, they would be deferred, they'd be deferred, you know, probably down the road. And so what the, the state is proposing to any, any business that has the income tax liability, say for the first quarter of 2020, which normally we do in the next couple of months, they are now saying it's not due until July 31st, 2020, but they can now defer up to $50,000 for, and make payments on that for a year starting July 2020. That, I have a, I'm working with HDL, our sales tax consultant, I'm waiting to get some more information from them. I have a very rough estimate of what I think it would, what would, what would be projected to the city if all the city businesses were able to do that. That would probably be a deferral of around $260,000 in revenue for the city. One thing to keep in mind, though, is that the vast majority of the city businesses that contribute sales tax don't contribute a lot during a quarter period. I mean, pretty much only of the 484 businesses that are reporting sales tax, only 64 actually have a $1,000, you know, a tax liability, a quarterly tax liability over $1,000. Only, only about, you know, 18 or so only have a tax liability higher than $5,000. So there could be, it's possible that a lot of businesses aren't going to do a deferral because they just don't provide that much in, in sales tax revenue or liability.
Okay. What do we do, though, as well? Or do we, have you, are we factoring in if, if the governor should all of a sudden do a property tax deferral as well? Is that going to hit us?
That would hit us, we have not, we have not factored that in. That would also be a very, a large hit. According to, you know, according to California League, California Cities, they've actually had put together an idea where I believe the governor agrees with, but they're not going to defer the property taxes. However, they are going to defer any penalties and interest on late payments of them. So if they change their line.
But if they're, if they're late, they don't have to make a. Oh, got it. And then lastly, on the, the, the Sebag homeless grant or payment or obligation that we have, I, I, I agree with, with Mr. Rodriguez that it's now is not the time to be cutting that. But are you proposing that we don't pull this out of the general fund and that we pull this out of a reserve fund somewhere? I mean, reserve funds are for rainy days and, well, it's raining now, raining pretty hard. So is that where we're going to pull that to make that up so that we don't, we don't dip into the, into the general fund for this?
No, so these, that payment is, is still included in these adjustments. So that, you have to approve this, these adjustments, that budget appropriation is still part of the general fund.
Got it. So, so, so these figures that you gave us still include that, that 103, 103,000?
Yeah, it still includes the 103,000.
So that's still in there and all of these, the, the, the numbers that we're looking at here in the staff report reflect that, then?
Yes, they do.
So that would, that would show us with a $42,697 deficit still?
Yes.
And how do we propose making that up?
That would be, there are, could be other possible savings that there, I haven't been able to identify other possible savings. It could just be a use of the, of the general fund operating reserve, reserves for just operations and additional, you know, reduction of the 42,000, which is, that includes in my, my number of 11,168,000 ending fund balance, that includes that 42,000 kind of deficit.
Okay, so we are dipping in a little bit into that $11 million reserve that we have for that.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, may I give, make a comment real quick?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The reason that we put the $103,000 on the table was so that we could make up that deficit, not go into deficit spending, and also have a little extra cash because there are some local needs that need to be met as well that we just don't have the budget for. In addition, you asked a question about what about next year? I want to make sure that you understand that we quickly prepared for this to make sure that we could make some adjustments between now and the end of the year. But our staff, our consultants and our administration are all sitting down and each one of the department heads, and we are coming up with additional cuts and postponements of different projects and such until the end of next year to see where we're at. So in other words, let's say there's a CIP project that we have budgeted for next year. We may put that off into the last third quarter to the fourth quarter to begin that project to ensure that we have the cash on hand and we have not gone into deficit spending for that year. There is other items that we're going to cut out of the budget as, as needed, but we want to make sure that, that we got you something from now until the end of the year, but be, be assured that we're going to be prepared for what comes next year as well. And as the number has become a little clearer as to the forecast as to where this has taken us, I think it'll be a little easier for us to say, we can either do this or we cannot do that.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. City Manager, and I'll just conclude with this. It's, it's a pretty scary time for residents and for the city. We've got to keep the city running, but our residents aren't working and they're not earning money, so they can't pay taxes. And yet they're expecting all of us to still provide them with police and fire and all the other things that we are required to do. So we're all, we're all a little bit on pins and needles here, but I did want to just say that I really do appreciate the fiscal shape that we are in now. We've done a good job getting us there, you and the staff, and it makes being an elected official a lot easier when we have, we have such good numbers, even in such a scary downturn time. I'm just going to keep my fingers crossed that it doesn't get much worse than this and, and the economy bounces back pretty quick on this. I wouldn't object to pulling out of reserves if we had to for the, for the Sebag thing, but if we can keep from doing that, that's even better. That's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Griffith?
Yeah, so when I looked at the figures today, I know that we have suspended all travel, and I noticed that there were the full, the full allocation for the year in each of our travel budgets. And I know that that money's not there, so that's not going to be an expense. So I brought that up today in my meeting with the city manager's office and asked if that would be adjusted, and I wanted to know, have you done that?
So that could be adjusted, but that is not included in this, in, in this, in this budget adjustment. I left that to council discretion if that is something that they would like to do.
Okay.
So you have?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Betts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got some general comments and then address the Sebag homeless funding request issue. You know, we, we learned in 2013 that the sooner that we act to address financial challenges, the, the better off we're going to be. And small adjustments early will save us falling off any kind of a financial cliff. And we can certainly expect the hotel visitors' tax is going to drop. You know, staff's already accounted for about $550,000 that they can safely say we have to adjust for. And the sales tax is surely going to be down, there's less retail, the price of gas is lower, and people aren't driving as much. So, but as long as the property tax holds, which is what our major income is, you know, we're probably going to fare better than some of the other cities in the Coachella Valley. And not to mention that we've got a pretty good reserve. We learned some lessons from the past, and every council since then and the staff has worked really hard to make sure that when something like this comes around, we're in a much better position than we were the last time. There's going to be some serious budget implications for sure if the property tax receipts drop, but I, I think we have to, that, that's almost, you know, that's crisis stage again. So let's just hope that doesn't happen, and whatever pressure we put on through the league and otherwise, our city can't handle a property tax drop. That, that'll just, that's too much. One concern may be what happens with the rate of delinquency on the property tax, and I think staff should check with the county to find out how they're going to handle that. You know, if there's a lot of people that aren't paying their tax right now and the county's talking about deferments or, or, not deferments, but forgiving penalties, which indicates they might think there's going to be a lot of people not paying, I'd like to know how that's going to impact us. You know, when we're gonna, you know, if somebody doesn't pay today, when do we not see that money from the county? Or do we, will they cover it? How are they going to treat it? It's a very critical question. I think we need to get answered. You know, we don't have any of the answers right now. We're in a very fluid situation, but we have enough to know we need to make some cuts. And I'm really encouraged to see that the staff took that action right away, and it's coming to us with something showing that, you know, they're not asleep at the switch. And the council's first duty always is the budget. And so, you know, during good financial times, it's really easy to be a councilmember, as Councilmember Gardner said, at least in respect to the finances. When you get into serious budget times, well, we've got to roll up our sleeves and do a little bit more work. So I'm hoping and looking forward to some budget sessions coming forward. I was comfortable that we hadn't had one yet since we didn't have, seem to have any dark clouds on the horizon financially, but we do have some things we need to look at now. And so I'd like to get a budget session started as soon as possible with, at least with staff getting us the detailed numbers. And one of those critical numbers is going to be an exact number, as close as staff can get us on what the reserve is. That we have to know. Now, there's some question regarding, you know, 43,000 in this budget, and I don't think that anybody needs to consider that, that we have to be averse to spending reserves. That's what you save them for, they're to cushion things in, you know, difficult times. We don't want to use them, but I'm not, I'm not really worried right now over if we end up with a 43,000 shortage at the end of the year in the larger scheme of things, that's not going to be a, a big deal. The, the, you know, we're just going to have to, to take a look at this. I would like to, you know, start looking in the budget process, have the city manager give us a plan on who he's, you know, we've deferred some hiring, which is great. Who are we deferring? Are we deferring somebody that maybe the council would like to see? But, and, and because it's going to shortchange an area where the council wants to put some emphasis, so I want to take a look at that. As far as the Sebag homelessness funding goes, I understand that's already past due, and this is not the time. I mean, they're, they're going to have that committee and that effort, the valley-wide effort is going to be strained beyond what they're probably going to be able to cover with everything that we've got going in right now. And especially considering that they're able to leverage, I understand they can leverage our 103,000 with another 103,000 from Desert Healthcare District. So it's really, we're talking about cutting them off to 200, $206,000, as I understand the way this funding is going. So I do not think this is the time to even consider that. If we don't spend that money by putting it into the valley-wide effort, well, we might as well just start spending it ourselves, and we only have half as much to work with. So I just continue to implore the people down at Sebag to, don't forget Desert Hot Springs, that we need help. Now, as far as where any money comes from on reserves, when you tap into them, I think, I don't, I don't like taking reserves for one specific purpose every time I get into an accounting situation or, you know, especially when it's tight, is you work through what you need to pay and don't need to pay, and then whatever comes up short becomes a direct link between the reserve fund and funding the general fund, and it's not mixed up by going a whole bunch of different other places, saying, oh, well, let's dip into reserves to pay this, let's dip into the reserves to pay that. I don't think that's good financial planning. The better way to go is to say, we're going to pay this, we got a deficit, and now we're going to use the reserves to make up that deficit each year, and then use the, the reserves to carry us. So wrapping this up, the last thing I would say is I really would like, at this point, to start getting some more information. If your staff floods us with financial information, that's okay with me. But one of the most critical things is going to be, well, the two critical things are, how's the county going to treat the property tax? Because that's going to tell us a lot of where we need to go. And how much is our reserves? So that if we've got to start using reserves to cover us through, you know, a year or two, where's that at? So hopefully staff will get back to us with that stuff. And I may have some other comments, but right now that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I believe Jeffrey has a number as of today, what our current reserve is. Jeffrey?
Yeah, so we have, we have about, city has about in cash nine points, over 9.4 million dollars in reserves. And the different types of reserve, there is the emergency reserve or the cannabis reservatory, setting aside 25% of the cannabis revenue. As of, you know, as of today, we have 1.38 million dollars in there. We're planning on putting another 1,053,000 at the end of this fiscal year, but right now there's 1.3 million dollars in there. We also have a reserve from our own fiscal policies of the natural, natural fiscal emergency reserve that has 3.7 million dollars. And then we've got reserves for future, future capital uses, which is about 758,000. And then the remaining, you know, 3.5 million are, you know, And then the remaining, you know, $3.5 million are, you know, assigned to operations. So $9.4 million in reserves to get us, to help us get through.
Okay. And Mr. Mayor, you were there, we went through this crash the other time, and I don't want to get, you know, thinking everything just bright and rosy because we don't know what's coming ahead, but this sure sounds like we're in a heck of a lot better position this time than we were the last time.
Absolutely. Ms. Pi, you have anything?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I, I disagree with Sebag, but let me do something first. The study for the escrow property, is it possible to find out who pays in escrow versus who, who does not pay in escrow? That could tell us something about the deferment. So far as what Robert said, I'm sorry, Mayor Proton Griffith said, where are we going to So I think that our council budget should be cut because of that. Now, on the other thing, Sebag, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Betts, about we give $103 and Desert Healthcare District gives $103. It's more than that. We're leveraging money. And with the other city, when we did the cooling center, that took the staff time, that's all. We did not have to pay for that. Sebag did certain things to get the dollars for that. It was, I see you shaking, would you just hold on a minute? $25,000 a month. And we leveraged that with Sebag and the killing. What's happening now with, and to do the encampment, which we were going forward with, was only going to cost police time. They were going to do wraparound services and get them out of there. Now, with this hotel that we have in Desert Hot Springs, Sebag is, is leveraging dollars. The county is leveraging dollars. So without that, it would cost us much more than the $103 or the $206. And with that, we, we can't do anything with the $200,000. And these people who, say for now, that are in this hotel, they are our citizens too. And we would not be able to do that without them. My suggestion is take the $103 out of the 25% tax from the, from the, from the marijuana. The reason being, and I'll take what you said, Mr. Betts, if we keep taking from the reserves without a reason, that's not right. But there are restrictions with the 25%. And I would say put it in there. But without that, we're not going to do, do anything to help the homeless in this city. I'm done.
Thank you very much. My comments are this, is we're in a extraordinary time in our lives that we have planned for. Thank God that we made the cuts we did years ago. Thank God we have the staff we have today and the financial policies and plans that we put in effect. We are to dip into reserves in emergencies, and this is an emergency, and I believe $43,000 are justified to do that. What I'm worried about is what fiscal year 2021 quarters, one, two, and three are going to look like after we, we make it out of here. So that's what I'm worried about at this point. I believe we can make it through the fourth quarter of this year, as I don't think the tax revenues, I, I do think in a lot of cases, tax revenues might be up in, in gas and, and some sales tax due to retail because of all the shopping that's going on to cover this. But, and if, and a lot of people aren't leaving the community and shopping other places or shopping here, so I think that could be a positive. But again, this is all speculation over time. What we need to do is, is listen to our staff, we need to cover our, our bills today, dip into a little bit of the reserves if we need to, and then we need to have our consultants and, and our financial director work hard on making some good projections for next year as they come down. So is there any other staff comments?
Well, I'd like to...
Go ahead, Jeffrey.
Okay, well, I'd like to point out for the, so for the council members' travel and training, there's currently $15,282 total that hasn't been spent. If you, if you'd like to, if you'd like me to, to cut that, that's fine, but that's how much that is at this point. I don't think, we can't, we cannot use like the emergency reserves for $103,000 to do that, but what you are able to do is that you can reduce the amount that you're going to transfer for this year to the marijuana reserve by $103,000, if that's how you would like to handle it instead.
Keep in mind, we're, we're depositing $1,053,000 into the 25% marijuana reserve. So if we were to take the $103,000 from that $1,053,000 with also an option or council direction to pay that back within the next 12 or 15 or 18 months if we can, or make sure we do pay it back within a certain period of time, that would cover that and we could also pay the $103,000 to Sebag.
Do we, by, 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 by reducing the amount that we put into the marijuana reserves, what is, what is this, what is the statutory restriction on us doing that? Is it, does it allow us to do that, Jennifer? Or can we, can we, can we adjust that? Because I thought, the way I read it, it says 25% shall be put into reserve, not 25% unless we need to take some out.
No, it does have, it does have a mandatory statement, but the reason why I think that it is fine is a couple-fold. Number one, we're in extraordinary circumstances that nobody's ever seen. Number two, this was volitional by the city council, meaning that the city council put it upon themselves to set aside the 25%. The city council has the discretion to go ahead and change that as well. So it's, it's not like the 25% who was state, was, you know, set by state law or anything like that. So it's completely within the discretion of the city council. That's, that is my opinion on this, especially in light of what we're seeing under the extreme kind of emergency circumstances that we have. So I, I do not take issue with it.
So because that, that 25% marijuana reserve, does that, is that reflected in the $11 million general fund reserve balance? Or is that held off separately?
That is included in the $11 million consolidated general fund balance.
Okay, all right. But, so then it is clear that we can make, we, we can just reduce the contribution to the marijuana reserve by that $103,000, which, didn't you just tell me that it was supposed to be roughly a little over a million, this, this, this transfer?
A million fifty-three thousand.
Yes, a million fifty-three thousand.
So, so by reducing it by $103,000, we're really not, that's not even 1% if I'm, my math is right, my really quick math. All right, I, I have, I have, I think that's the better solution to this, is, is to reduce the, reduce the, the contribution to the marijuana reserve by that. And if, if now is the appropriate time, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll move that we do that.
Yeah, we'll have a motion on the table as our second, first of all, and then I'll go to comments.
I, I would second that.
All right, Mr. Betts?
Yeah, I, you know, it really scares me to see electeds telling the financial director how he's going to handle accounting treatment on his books, on the city books. And I'm also going to say that the reserve was set up with some mechanisms in place to make sure that it's a formal action that takes place. And I don't see on the agenda, action to take, go into the reserves. I see a budget presentation, mid-year budget adjustments, but it doesn't say anything about taking action on drawing down the reserves. And I think that'd have to come back to us as a separate action. That's the discipline that was put in the, in the reserves to begin with. And I'll just reiterate that, man, you sure make a hard audit trail when you start just using reserves, you know, as each little item that comes along. It should be a separate transaction. And I just want to make sure I'm clear, I wasn't sure that Councilwoman Pi heard me that I support funding Sebag. I don't know if she heard, you know, the homeless effort there, and I wasn't sure in her comments if maybe she didn't hear what I had said or was unclear. My only disagreement would be using the reserves of the marijuana, but I think it'd be foolish at this point not to, and especially given these circumstances, not to provide that funding to Sebag because of all the other things that go along with that.
May I?
Yes.
I agree with the motion that was made, I was trying to second it myself. If we do not do anything, we're dropping the homeless off. We can tell Sebag, we're not going to contribute and, but tell them we need help. How are they going to give us help?
Who is suggesting that we not give them anything?
Well, it's in the reserve, it, it's, I'm sorry, it's part of the reserve now. No, it's not. It is part of the deficit now. So all I was trying to do is take, take it out of the deficit and put it someplace else. And then it's not touching the rest of our reserves.
Okay, well, you and I agree on funding the homeless, we're just quibbling about the funding and that, how it's going to go and it looks, Mr. Mayor, like I'm probably going to lose on that one and I'm not going to vote no on this going forward, just...
I think at this point, we're just in a position where everybody's trying to get to the same place, just a different path. So I think everybody's points have been made, there is a motion and a second on the table and without...
The, the motion then is to, to just reduce our contribution to the marijuana reserves by the appropriate amount to cover the Sebag homeless contribution, correct?
And then, yes, and as second it was, are you...
By, yeah.
And then staff has taken notes on the comments that have been made today about moving forward. Is there any other comments? All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Why am I always first? A.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pi?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Griffith?
Aye.
Mayor Mattis?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, our last item on the agenda today is item number five, which is a resolution consenting to the enforcement and observation of all orders and quarantine regulations by the California Department of Public Health and statutes related to the public health by the county health officer of Riverside County. And that's going to be our city attorney, Ms. Marie.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We, we, the city pretty much, you know, had, had its own emergency measures. And in addition to that, in the emergency resolution, we actually incorporated the county's orders, but over the weekend, I was actually asked by the county to bring this resolution before you. And the purpose is really to encourage uniform application of the county and state orders in the city. And it's, in my opinion, it's a little bit of a technicality, but we were asked specifically so that we ensure that, that, that the county orders do in fact apply to citizens within the city. With that, that concludes my staff report. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Do we have any public comments?
No, we do not.
All right, move to councilmember comments.
You.
Mr. Betts?
Yeah, so by doing this, the purpose is to encourage uniform application of county and state orders in each city, but we had some orders that were above and beyond what the county was suggesting. So this is a formality where we've agreed with them that we are adopting theirs and we agree to everyone that they've put in place, I think, but this isn't precluding us from going further, correct?
Correct.
And we could put in that stores will, instead of just people being fined or what are facing whatever penalty for no mask, we could insert into this that stores that allow patrons in their building would also be subject to civil, to penalties by the city. Can we put that in there now?
I wouldn't, I, I don't recommend putting it in this resolution, considering that this resolution truly is just allowing the county health official jurisdiction, if you will. But we could amend the other resolutions with respect to the orders that we've already passed.
Okay, so I'm good with that, with waiting and obviously got to see if we get any traction on that or if the county comes ahead and does it anyhow. So, okay, that's the question ahead. I just want to make sure that this doesn't preclude us from being more restrictive as we have been. I mean, this city has led on this stuff, especially on the eviction of commercial properties. I don't know if the county includes that, but the eviction moratorium on commercial properties, we see some other cities now starting to catch up to us on that one.
Any other council comments?
I do, besides being more aggressive, we did on the city council, I think, the state said 90 days before someone could tell a landlord. Go ahead.
I, I didn't want to cut you off, you finish your question. I apologize.
So if we want to make it less like we did with our eviction, how does that affect what we're doing now?
So with, with respect to the eviction, the, the state actually gave everybody seven days notice and, and what was, what the city council actually adopted, if I recall correctly, was a 10 days notice. So for example, if somebody knew that they had an issue and that they couldn't pay their rent, be it for commercial or residential purposes, that they would have to provide the landlord within 10 days, pretty much of, of them knowing that, hey, listen, I've got a problem, I, I need some help. So that, that's what the city did. So we went, again, we provided a little bit more extra time than the state.
Okay, I thought someone had, had put the edict down that it had to be 90 days, so I'm okay, I'm okay.
Any other councilmember comments?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, we do have a public comment.
And who is the public comment?
Her name is Amy Andrews Gray.
Amy, the floor is yours.
Hi, good evening, mayor and city council members. I'm, I'm contacting you guys because I'm expressing my grave concern for the masked rollout of 5G being installed in our community. I feel that it is an inappropriate rollout based on the stack, fact that our city has declared a state of emergency as well as our country. I also feel that the nationwide law that was signed on the 23rd is also inappropriate based on the fact that our nation is in a state of emergency. So based on that, there are several studies that are available for you to look into. And if you need help accessing those or finding out where they are, I'm very capable of emailing them to you. There are many hazards that are associated with the 5G, human hazards, environmental hazards, hazards to animals and the environment in general. There are several scientists and doctors that are pleading vigorously for this to stop. There are whole nations that have stopped the impending rollout. And I myself have received a series of treatments via electromagnetic stimulation, also known as TMS. So I know exactly what it does and that was just a small fraction of the signals that would be released from these boxes. And so with that being said, I'm asking that the city release or enact a, an emergency ordinance prohibiting any further rollout until such time as installers or companies therein that have made proper application can provide the city with... can provide the city with factual and current studies that have been done, because there are no current studies on 5G as it's installed. They're going to have to wait, and by that time, it's too late. So I would ask that city would issue an ordinance that says cease and abate all further actions, and provide us with studies that show the safetiness over a period of time. When you can do that, continue. I, I don't want to make it seem like this is anti, you know, 5G or whatever. But I do want to say, I would like you all to take an opportunity to sit down and study the materials, not when we're in a state of emergency. There's people that are trying to stay alive, people that are trying to feed themselves, people that are trying to build their homes. And really, no one has time right now to sit down and study about some 5G. And that's, that's the truth. So that would be my request, is that you issue a cease and abate for any further 5G installs in the city, as well as adopt an ordinance that requires any person submitting an application or answering to an RFP for installation, whether it be Spectrum or anyone else, that they need to be required to provide proof of studies, and that it's not going to be harmful to the citizens of Desert Hot Springs.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your comments. They'll be considered.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comments? All right. We'll move on to councilmember comments and/or a, I'll entertain a motion.
You have a motion already, don't we?
I don't think I have a motion yet on this item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then I'll move that we, that we accept staff recommendations.
Second, there's a motion by Mr. Gardner and a second by Mr. Betts. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Betts?
Aye.
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pye?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Griffith?
Aye.
And Mayor Mattis?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. At this time, item six was taken off the agenda table. Set calendar was approved in full. Future agenda items, you can discuss with the city manager. Did I miss any public comments, Ms. Ernik?
No.
I have one more comment if I could.
Yes, you may.
So I attended a governor's conference. It was a disaster. The one at Sunline went okay, but it was a little difficult. I just want to commend the staff on excellent job on putting this together. Just really, really good.
Absolutely. Yes. Kudos to everybody for just crazy times we're in now and for the work that you've done. And thank you to city council for being attentive and being available at all times to make the proper decisions based on these, these times. Mr. City Manager, anything else?
No, Mr. Mayor, that's it. Thank you very much.
All right. With that, we'll adjourn this meeting, and the recording will end.
Be well, everybody.
Thank you.